In.
It didn't click, it didn't.
Uh-oh.
It's alright.
Do you wanna start over with that?
Sure.
Let's just make a statement that. We call the role and we do have a quorum. Not law that you have to. Call names, alright. Uh, approval of the minutes. And do we have people attending?
C.
C and C A, alright. Um.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, second, second, any questions, errors or omissions? Uh, somebody, uh, wanna call the role?
Lee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Igor?
Yes.
Jerry?
Here.
Margaret?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we approve the minutes. Uh, budget twenty twenty-five, uh, update. We've submitted it and I don't think we've heard of any problem. Have we? No, no, remember, you know, it's on track. And I saw out there on the, um, door. That the budget committee is selecting a meeting tomorrow night, so that must be. We asked for the same amount of money, so I don't think we have any problem there. And how is the, uh, computer?
It's coming tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Frank's gonna come and set it up, so.
Good.
Wow, good.
That was the only item we had in there that would.
That would be different.
Uh, yeah, good. Uh, report of our officers and committees. Selectment representatives, Ozon here, did he send any message with anybody? Alright, uh, Russ, Excoration Subcommittee?
We put it off until January.
Okay.
I was unavailable.
Russ Lane Subcommittee?
Scott's working on getting that, um, they're done, how many? Properties of each type are affected by the flipping? So that we can submit the application for, um. Having the, the term be evaluated by the, um, C R S committee. And then that would allow us to take the next.
Good. Good. And, uh, there was, it's not on here, but it said two o'clock, the Hazard Mitigation. Committee work and they're coming along and supposed to have, um. Some sort of a final draft with their mitigation plan. Oh, by February. And I can look at it online, Jerry participated. Margaret and I participated today, anyways, gave input. So, as, um, planning board members, look at it, uh, look at it online, the draft and see. If you kind of agree, because it is a plan, there's an emergency, it ties into the master plan. Ties into the shoreline, the front plain. It ties into, you know, all the different disciplines in the town, so if any of you members see anything.
And let us know how much time you spend looking at it too, because it gives us credit.
Yes.
For how we spend.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you review it, absolutely, you, it, it take an hour to review it and that's what we're short.
Scott said you only got to accrue the hours, uh, outside of the meeting if you are a paid employee.
No, no, we're getting it. About twenty-five dollars an hour.
Even if you're not a paid employee, you're allowed to make sudden accrue those when I go to the meetings, I just count those hours, never like. The time I take to look at them, so I'll, I'll add that in.
Yeah.
It's not too late to add, she sent a worksheet through, um, this afternoon, so if there's any time you spent before now.
Yes.
That too.
Okay, perfect.
We can have, we're short sixteen, which isn't, you know, the end of the world.
It's not too big, but still, let's add all our hours.
Yeah, yeah, we get.
I'll, I'll try to look at it, so tomorrow.
And even just looking at, critiquing it for an hour counts.
Yep, and then you can email over the hours. Who are we emailing?
June.
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 June, Donald.
The one that sends us all the meeting notices?
Yep.
She's super nice.
Kevin will thank us because he'll be stopped providing the sixteen.
Working hard on it.
People will be having.
He's at every meeting.
People have to do the sixteen. You have to, you get the hours, so, so, um, other business. We have with us, uh, Bailey Clay, uh, to, uh, talk to us in a conceptual informational way. About, um, um. A proposed, um, major subdivision. Um. That, uh, will be submitted, uh, for hearing, review. Um, and it's part of the process, it's, it's part of what a, an applicant or an agent can ask for. I mean, we can't go in depth into all the details, but, and, and it's, it's more binding, any, any thoughts? We have, the suggestions we have. It's not binding, but it's an opportunity for you to ask us some questions or for us to make some comments. It might save you money and time and.
Right.
Uh, into the future.
Yep.
So.
Yes, I've got with me, everything I need to submit this, got large scale. I don't know if you guys want me to hold this, but.
Right, right, we have a method of ours.
All the ones.
Small ones, the small dogs, small.
This one, and I don't know if you guys have the same one here.
I think that.
You do. So.
I think we do.
Actually, if you wanna set it here, so.
Can I set it there?
Yeah, alright, I mean, I'll actually hold it if you wanna, I'll, I'm gonna.
I mean, perfect.
There you go.
There we go.
So just tell us in a general way, this isn't the hearing, but a generality, you know, thinking.
Yep. So we've got proposal here for, uh, five lot subdivision. On one eighty, at the address of one eighty-one Mary Lake Road. Um, one, two, three, four, five lots, um, smallest being here. Larger lots along the riverside here, the Hubbard Brook here. And what we've really lately, lately been working on is the drives, um, person comments. So, these two homes have their own, these two homes have their own, we do have an easement right here. Um, for trucks to make a circle drive-through, so they can. They can access all these properties without issue, and then what we just added as well was this turnaround for lot number two here. And so that was based on some of the comments that we received earlier, but this is. You know, the closest we've gotten so far to, um, a concept for our five lot subdivision.
And, and you know, and as, as I've said, we always say. Uh, read the subdivision regulation. Um, carefully, the road design, the drainage, the everything. Uh, and read that, because that's the roadmap as to what you have to.
Correct.
Provide.
Everything we've done here is, is with that in mind.
In order to. Yep.
Based on what we've read online.
Uh, I, I have a question, actually I have two questions, but, um, the first one is, um, um, because. Roads and access have been kind of on the back of my mind lately. The driveways have, do those have to be, uh, approved by the road agent, by Mike? Uh, of Public Works, the location of them?
We can, we, we. Generally ask for comment from the police department, the fire department.
I'll show you what.
The road agent, sure, we can include.
This one right here, let me just do a. This, this driveway right here, I have a little concern over only because it's on a corner.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know if that's anything that's within our jurisdiction or not.
They have to get a driveway permit, they have to, they have to comply us with a driveway.
So that might be something we could talk to Mike Welch about to make sure that that's, um, okay, or because he, Mike's responsible for the driveway permit.
Right.
Yeah.
Make sure to, uh, make sure you touch base with the fire department, the police department, the road agent. The selectmen for sewer and water, all those disciplines weigh in, and yes, you do need a driveway permit. For two entrances, if that's what you have, two of them.
The other one, the other one seems fine, it's on a straightaway.
Yeah.
But that, that one on the corner, I just, uh, uh, I don't know, it may not be problematic, but it's just. Um, again, I'm, right now, I'm, access is one of those things that's on the back of my mind.
Yeah, we would be happy to, to rearrange things maybe if any of it's safe.
I'm not trying to make you jump through hoops, if, if, if it's okay with the road agent.
Right.
It's okay with me.
Yeah, gotcha.
But then you list of checking out for sure.
Yeah, but you wanna check, you're better off checking out before than getting to that point and then have to.
And the other thing is.
It's fine, it's fine.
Um, is the, is the application for this complete, or is it, where are we?
Yeah, you have it, um, with me.
Okay, so, we have to notify the town of Thornton, correct? Because the only access to this is through a town road that's the town of Thornton. So, just like what was going on in our other situation.
Absolutely.
This has to be notified to the town of Thornton, planning board, as, uh, believe it's the planning board there. Um, but we should probably notify both the select board and the planning board.
So, do they need to be notified?
I think we have to do that, don't we, once the application is submitted?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, that's our responsibility to do that. But just so you know, it's just another.
Yep.
Thing.
Sure.
So, anyway. Those are my two comments.
Uh, you're, uh, Dan and Donald, yeah, thank you for saying.
Well, you know, I was looking at this, I was looking at this today and I'm like, there's something about this that looks awful familiar and I grabbed my book and. The, um, just so you know, the. The RSA is six seventy-four fifty-three. And, um, it talks about the, the application for permits where land is affected and by municipal boundaries. And the only access in, um, to this is through Thornton.
Thornton, that's right.
So, I live in a similar spot.
Yes, we do. We totally do, so we're very familiar with that.
Yeah, so anyway.
Good to know.
Yep.
And, and the paperwork, we have this paperwork, um.
I don't wanna mess it up, I guess, is what I'm saying, I wanna make sure we're.
Yeah, no, no, no. Well, no, absolutely. Um, we don't wanna mess it up and I don't, I don't believe. We have to notify Thornton to have a conceptual informational.
I, 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 I.
I mean, with a.
No, I think it's.
I don't think we do.
I think it says, um, upon receipt of an application for a permit of approval under this title of the, the subdivision, development change, da-da-da-da-da, um. The adjoining, the municipality receiving the application. Shall inquire in writing, um, to the appropriate administration, administrative officials in the adjoining municipality. As to the existence of facts or regulations, which under paragraphs one, three, or four of this section or otherwise would preclude. Or affect such subdivision development, um, or change of use. And so, um. There, there's a timeline and all that stuff involved, and so that's.
For us though.
We have to, we have to contact Thornton, um, to the appropriate administrative officials. So, I don't know if that's the Board of Selectmen or if it's the Planning Board, but I would do both.
Definitely do both.
Certainly do both.
Yes.
Yes, and I would do it officially, um. With specific, using the specific language that's in six seventy-four fifty-three too.
And we, we don't have an application for us to say, yeah, because th- this paperwork submitted, um, ha- has. The ownership name, um.
We shouldn't do it till the application is complete.
Yeah.
You know, we don't wanna, just one shot, we don't wanna be going back and forth.
No, no, so we don't have, I mean, the fees haven't been paid, you know. All of the, all of the copies haven't been submitted, we don't have a complete. So we're not in violation of anything possible at this moment, we don't have a complete, it's in the works. And, and, and it was a good thing to come here and, and, and get some input and insight and, and have a chance to ask us questions. Ask you questions, um.
I want it to be open to the board and anybody who's interested, um.
And the, the name, I, and this is just, I'm, it's called, um, Hubbard Hills.
Hubbard Hill, yeah.
Hubbard Hill, is, is the lot hilly? I mean, you have great issues and so forth to worry about.
I guess it's technically one hill.
Is it, uh, steep uphill, steep downhill? Or off, you know, if you have those ki- I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, if you have those kinds of issues to address also.
Um, we don't. Don't, I mean, what we have is a pretty steep grade on the side of the Hubbard Brook, the property. Uh, otherwise, it's actually extremely flat.
Yeah, it's, it's like a big field up there.
Yeah. It's just flat.
You suspect it to be a farm.
Yeah, I, 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 I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't have, uh, have those issues, um.
We found, um, we found very little issue with the land up there.
Yeah.
Um, quite a nice piece of property.
That's a nice location.
Yeah.
No wetlands, so.
No wetland?
No.
No, um, down here, the pitch is too much to build on. Right, so that's the only real thing of note that we have is, on these three lots, or I should say four lots. Everything you can see that's shaded darker i- is quite a pitch.
Yep.
Uh, and to be honest, it's too close to waterfront anyway. To be even considering building anything on.
Right.
Uh, so we're a little bit untouched.
So your development is outside the. The zone where, um, you know, the shoreline protection or the.
It sure is. Yep.
Did anybody else have any of that?
No.
Um.
The, actually, this updated book, it says planning board.
Does it?
It says planning board, so it's all, all planning board.
My new book's supposed to be coming soon.
Yeah.
Sometime. Oh, but I'd send it to both.
Yeah.
I just. That is safe and sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I'm planning on, um. Making it to the January meeting.
Yes. Yes, so we have plans to.
Completed application.
Uh, yep, to submit a full application for the January meeting.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Wait, and so what's our timeline for that?
So an ad has to go to the paper tomorrow or Thursday at the latest, um, because of the deadline of the holidays. So, in order for it to have enough time with the, get it to the paper for January first publication.
If it's appropriate, I did bring everything that we need. If it's not, I will come back.
So what, oh, what's our timeline for notification of the other municipality was to, to submit the application this evening?
It's twenty-one, twenty-one days, you know, we say twenty-one to give us enough time to look at it, review it, get the ad in the paper and all that. Notice to the abutis, I think it is ten days.
But I'm just thinking about the municipality for, uh, for that RSA.
Yeah, and what does it say to the municipality for the notice?
I.
I don't, I don't say the same, I don't think about the timeline.
But I remember that on the, on the other issue that we were dealing with, that, that there was a timeline and they didn't meet the timeline, I wanna make sure we meet it. And we exceed the expectations.
Absolutely. If he submits a, what he considers a complete application tonight.
Yep.
Let's just say, he's submitting it, we'll look at it. That meets the twenty-one days for sure, because we've got another holiday and the January meeting is a week late. Even though we're a week late now, uh, the January is a week late, so let's. Um, the timeline met, um, so that would mean if he gave it to us tonight. Um. We have to look at it, hmm, look at. Go away and figure it was, and decide whether it's complete or not.
Right.
Completely not. And, and you would have to have the, all the abutis, pay the fees. Have the final plan that you're submitting, um. With the right name on it. And. Um, copies of the plan, you know. Um, we don't always have all of the, uh, commitments. In the submitting.
We would have, if it's twenty-one days, we would have to get that to, um, the town of Thornton. No later than the twenty-fourth of this month. I don't know how that's even possible.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
We would be completely open to removing our approval process to the February meeting.
Oh, good.
That would be really, 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 really good.
Just, cause I'm sensing the tension already as well.
It's just the holidays, holidays.
It's just, yeah.
The holidays.
Not so much tension, I just, we wanna make sure we do it right. We do it right.
Yeah.
Well, exactly, right, and I don't, we don't wanna rush anything.
So, so that would be, if, if you were to submit the application, you know, tonight, tomorrow, whenever.
Sure.
Um, it would give us that meeting to look at it.
Yeah.
To discuss it.
Yes.
And then we could, um, at that meeting, we could decide if that's when we're gonna send it to.
We could, we could approve it as complete enough.
Right. Right. I think that.
And then send it out the next day.
Yeah, it would give us more time, I don't believe that we actually do have the final product here yet.
Okay.
Based on the fact that this was an informational meeting and.
Yeah.
And I wanted to present.
And you didn't have to, and, and.
Right, this, this, this is why we have them, so.
And that's why I wanted to do it, so why don't we take the pressure off a little bit?
And you know what, look at how fortunate tonight's meeting was.
Yeah.
We, it dawned on us about the regional impact thing.
Yeah.
So.
Cool. Okay.
Cool.
That's really good.
All excellent information.
Yes, okay, so that's gonna be.
Alright, does anybody else have anything else they need to? Hint or suggestion they wanna make?
Um, I would suggest that we use the section on driveways and subdivision of the road. And we leave the first section of shoreline protection.
Okay.
Just double check those.
Okay.
And just make sure.
Yep. Understood.
Hey, any other suggestions? Anything you wanna ask us?
Out of this time?
Alright, well, thank you, for your understanding.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's gonna be a better. Process for, probably fewer.
I agree. So make it better, so I appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Alright.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Now, alright.
What applicants and.
Yep, oh, that's good.
Yeah. Alright, we have another conceptual informational meeting with Dennis Demers and his wife. And they have submitted some information, same exact thing. A chance to ask us questions, a chance for us to ask them questions, did you get a copy of that?
Could you send it down, please, I, I think I probably did, but I don't have it in front of me, so.
This is a, this is a minor.
Okay, that's why.
You have a house up on the hill. And you wanna bring in a second.
I wanna sub the, I wanna subdivide.
Subdivide.
And, uh, let's say for example.
Oh, yeah.
On the, uh, on the road, I have, uh, three hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
Road footage, I wanna take a hundred and twelve feet of that. All the way up to the top, see with a black line there?
Yeah.
All the way up to the top. It would be separate and, see, we live up on this side, yeah. At a certain age, sometimes you gotta move down on the first row. You know, I don't wanna fall off my driveway again. Yeah, so we would, uh, see if I can get the okay to subdivide.
And going that way, I, I, I figured it had to be going that way.
Well.
And.
It would be a hundred and twelve feet over here.
A hundred and twelve.
A hundred and twelve on the road footage.
And, and the access to that lot would be on the.
On the bar, on the bottom, bottom floor.
From the road.
And the access to the other one would be the current driveway.
It stays, stays the same.
Same as that driveway you got now.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And so you would need a, a separate, separate.
Separate driveway, yes.
Separate driveway and septic demonstration that, that you have enough room for a, a second septic.
Septic and the well.
Yeah, and the well.
I talked to Mike to see if I can get probably like a horseshoe type driveway, and he said maybe we could work something out on that. You know, come in on one side and part the other, between the hundred and twelve feet.
Yeah, they.
But if.
What often don't do those.
If not, it's no big deal.
Yeah.
You know, I can always turn it in reverse and go back the other way.
So the hundred and twenty-five feet or whatever.
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve, is that enough for the house and the.
Yes, yes.
And the driveway and the setback.
Yes.
And.
Yeah.
And we, and, um, when we were here, uh, looking at these the other day, getting ready for tonight. Um, we were trying to figure out where the downtown. Line is. And the downtown line, downtown fifteen feet that we're talking about.
Yep, right.
Is, uh, one seventy-five. Well, guess what? If, if you go straight one seventy-five up there, I think they just miss it. I think they just missed the fifteen feet rule. And I think they're in the non-downtown.
So they would have to, so their, their driveway would have to be at least fifteen feet from the, the property boundary? Is that what you're saying, yeah?
Yeah, it, it means they need more space, you know. Um, so. The plot of land as it stands now is within it, but if you subdivide it, the part that you're cutting off would be outside of.
This park ledge road right here.
Yes, yeah.
And this would be three hundred and forty?
Yeah.
You have a lot of land because of that little outcropping on the top. It stays within the downtown zone.
This year?
That, that, that little bump.
To the north.
That little bump to the north sticks it into the downtown.
Yeah, the drive, the driveway, the driveway comes up here and goes around here, I guess they bought that piece of land years ago.
Yeah.
Just so they can make that curve, so it can go up to the house.
There's two different ordinances for setbacks. In, in Woodstock.
Right on that, oh.
And that little bump sticks you into the northern part of Woodstock, which has.
This side will be on the northern part, that will be on the.
Yeah, so, so that piece after you subdivide would have a, a smaller setback ordinance. Than the part that you wanna cut off.
So that. This won't have anything to do with.
Yeah.
This side, so, I'm only staying with this side.
So the, the new lot, the new lot would require that the driveway be fifteen, at least fifteen feet from either boundary. Either new boundary, correct? What are the setbacks?
No, the driveway, the driveway could be closer than fifteen. There's distances between, I think it's only five, the lot and the edge of the driveway.
Okay.
And then, you'd have your driveway. And then, I think, and then the distance between the driveway and the house. And the house. And, you know, uh, we were trying to calculate out all these.
What the minimum?
All these, and, oh boy, I don't know, five hundred and twenty-five would do. All they need with thirty feet you need, I don't know. How, how big is the house?
The house would be like, uh, twenty-eight, forty, the, the most.
And the, and the.
And that would be setback up, up here.
And the twenty-eight would be, how old was the road or the forty?
Look, the, uh, forty would be this way.
Okay, the forty you want, yeah. I think we gotta do some calculating, I think.
They give you seventy-two extra feet.
But that would be, that would be within, yeah, fifteen feet, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's plenty.
I think, I think he's got it.
Yeah, that's plenty of feet.
We'll have to look, there, there's one feature we're gonna have to really look at.
Yeah.
And, and I, it's really the first time that. I don't know, yah, yah, and when we came up with the, um, downtown setback being less. It's because it's downtown and more congested and that's the way downtown's at, the buildings are right up against each other. I don't think any of us thought, oh boy, direct line, that takes in, um. Parkers like road, the first part, parkers like road also. We were thinking Route Three, might it be, be fair about it, I mean, something we need to wrestle with. We were thinking Route Three, might it be, be fair about it, I mean, something we need to wrestle with. And, and, and read our ordinance, but we read it, but, hmm, we, uh, we ekes, ekes. We didn't say strictly along Route Three. So it's just something for us to think about in our mind when we're, we're reviewing, the thought that we have to wrestle with. And, um, now if you're using the driveway for the house up that, I bet it doesn't.
I'm not using this driveway at all.
No, which, for our house right now, yes, we do, we do use.
Do we, do we, when we do a subdivision, can they use an existing driveway that's probably more than nine percent? I'm guessing, pretty accurate guess, or do they have to comply with the, nine feet? Uh, I mean, nine percent, great, I don't know. We gotta think about it.
Yeah, I, I would, you're talking about the existing driveway, I would say that if it's existing, it's existing.
Existing, it's existing, we're not changing it.
Yeah, that's, that, I don't think.
Not changing the driveway.
Not changing this driveway.
So that's something, yeah.
I'm just taking one twelve all the way up to the top.
Yeah.
It's like seven hundred feet here and six hundred here, sorry, I forget.
Right.
Uh, six hundred here, like making like, six fifty, seven hundred and ninety. So the, the total lot would be, uh, one point, one point five eight.
Yeah, I, just, you know, I would make sure that the, the setbacks, that you're comfortable with it, the width of the house and that everything,
Yeah.
that everything fits.
Yeah.
That way.
Yeah, I can always go back because it's kind of flat.
Yeah, it's seventy feet.
Right, as long as you can move the driveway over, it could be plenty.
It's plenty.
Yeah.
Because on the bottom it's fairly flat, then it starts going up, up and up.
And then room for the well and septic, that's all.
Yeah, that's why I only wanted the okay, see if I can do it before I go to the next step.
Right. You don't want to spend, yeah, I know, I get it.
Now, um, simple before, then we just have to make sure that the setbacks and the septic is, would, would be a big. But, and there's no town water up there?
No.
Town water doesn't go over the hill?
It's right on Route Three.
No.
Too bad, I, I could hook up to it.
That's making it a lot easier.
Yes, and not easier than going probably, I don't know, there might be ledge over there too. I know my well up on the top goes down through the ledge, it's down three hundred and fifty, two hundred and then one fifty. And a good second zone of ledge.
You don't have to pay for casing that way. Right.
Yeah, I threw a piece of ice in there one time with a pump, let go, I pulled the pump out, threw a piece of ice in there. And I waited, it was five minutes before. And it was watered from, uh, from the top, it was a hundred and twenty-five feet.
Wow.
But plenty of that.
Oh, good.
Good, all right.
Yeah.
So work on it some more. And were, were you going to try to shoot for January to have all the pieces put together, or are you also a February?
So, uh, what you need is, uh, what you need would be the setback, and whereabouts, where I can put the driveway, fifteen feet from the line.
Yeah, um, we have to have a hearing on it and, and, and all the abutis notice, let's see what you got in the package, so far. You paid your money.
No. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Got an application in? Uh, is that enough of a plan or?
I don't know, we need more, you know?
No, I think.
We don't need to know what.
That what they do with it, because the building plan makes this a.
But this is enough of a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Measurements, yeah.
Yeah, the measurements, this is, comes out of the tax rolls, the tax, uh, I guess, this is the list, you know? So, so, yeah, it, it looks like you're going to be ready for January. But those are the types of questions you'll be asked.
So you want me to make a nice big drawing for, for everybody to see?
No, you don't, you don't need to make a big drawing like that.
No, okay. Now, let, let's make sure we thought this through, remember, remember our experience, um, over here. Um, if the water is under five feet, I mean, five acres, the lot you're creating is under five acres, you have to demonstrate you have water and sewer capability. If it's over a five acre lot, you don't.
How do you, how do you demonstrate that?
You have to, we got into that now, right next door here.
But how, what's the requirement for?
You have to.
Has a, a test pit probably has to be done.
Test pit done.
Right?
Yep.
And, I mean, I don't know how you, how you say water, but.
Suppose an opinion.
Yeah, well, if they have water right next door, you could tap into that.
I was gonna say, you already own it, you could share well, so, so they do, I would say, yeah.
I don't know if Wayne has, Wayne doesn't have town water.
Next door to us.
Next door to us. I don't think it's on town.
My boy.
So.
I almost thought I want to went up over, and captured.
That'd be right, but it does, no.
Those houses. I'm not positive.
Because I talked to Mike, yeah, Mike said not the waters on the bottom by Route Three.
I bet the houses along Route Three tapped in and came that direction, you're on the other side of the.
Yes.
Park ledge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah.
But I, I think with the test pit, you've got, you've got proof of septic, and they currently own the property, both parcels, it's got a well, and I don't think we, do we have any restrictions for sharing the well?
And we don't like it.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, we, uh, do we have anything else?
Because they could still dig a well, but that would just be, uh, evidence of, you have access.
Yeah, right, we're not saying to do it, we're saying that, that, that would be, um.
I, I think, I think we have said yes, but like to the mother-in-law place out that.
Right.
I mean, Wiggins is a prime example, the mother-in-law, the, the house and one more. Lot, right. We have definitely said yes to, to people putting a mother-in-law.
It's not to actually use the same well, it's just to show, to show evidence that there would be access to water there. And then they can just dig their well out.
Right, really well. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to survey this sketch.
Mr. Raya's sketch.
Yeah, yeah, so you're gonna have to, um, talk to a surveyor, and they're the type of person that can tell you.
Yeah, they'll, and they'll, the well is gonna be here and the septic's gonna be there.
Yeah.
Where, where, they would show where they would be, the proper distance, and they would have the expertise to say there is a potential to drill a well there, there's going to be water there. There is, uh, uh, there isn't a wetland, there's going to be capability to have a septic system over here.
Yep.
You know, that's the type of, um, expert you need.
Yes.
To, uh, demonstrate.
Yeah, last year I went to see, uh, Saborn and Tower.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, never showed up.
Tower, never.
He took my name and address, phone number, but never got back to me. But I'll give it another shot.
Did you see anything else there that needs to be?
Roy is retired, so they're doing.
What's that?
Roy is retired, so there's a lot of work that they're, that's heading their way, but.
Yeah, that's the main thing, they get a surveyor to do it, they'll get the, all the details.
They need a survey, plan, they need to demonstrate.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mr. Saborn, see what, uh.
Yeah. I'll do that.
No, is that his first name, Roy?
Roy.
Roy Saborn?
Well, actually Steve, yeah.
Steve Tower. Steve, Steve Tower is the surveyor, it's a business, how he actually runs it. Okay, Roy is retired, so.
Roy Saborn. Roy Saborn.
Right.
Okay.
Steve, Steve Tower, Tower worked with Roy, were partners, and I think it's Steve now.
Who's him now?
But yeah, you gotta get that in, but it looks like, you know, you get that and talk to them, and he can help you walk. He, he can even come here with you.
Mm-hmm.
And, and answer our questions and, and provide us the information we need. So do that, and, um, anything else, anybody who can, who can go for advice?
Yeah, I talked to Mike Walsh about it, and he said I don't see any problem, you know.
Yeah, no, you got room for a driveway.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And how, how, how big a flat area do you have, it's steep, it goes.
Before it starts going up, I would say.
How, how much is the flat pot?
I would say over, over a hundred feet, two hundred and fifty, man, before it starts to boil.
Hundred and fifty feet back?
Yeah, surveyor will help.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you talk to Steve, he'll.
He'll agree.
He'll make sure that you've got everything.
Because they, they do survey and assess the design.
Yep.
So.
It would be, it, it will.
Give you a plan with the septic already, where to place the septic. We will know, and he will know when he goes out there, he will know that if there's any wetland, what's a sign of wetland that, uh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any reason why it's not gonna work, he'll let you know that.
Okay.
Yeah, plus the house would be on, so, on the cement slant, and it'll have a basement.
It, it'd be done right.
Yes.
You'll have all the information and.
Okay, so that'll be on the next.
Yep, they're, they're gonna like that, they'll give you all your connections that you need.
All right, thank you.
That's a good, that, that'll.
Thank you.
Something nice.
Something nice.
And I do, I just made out all the charges, so I have not, you have not, because you didn't know yet. So, I'll get, I'll send it to, actually Bonnie, I have his application.
You have the total with.
It has a total on that.
Yeah, I saw that, we know that was.
Yeah. Those three sixty-seven eighty-four. Has the six certified mail. Three sixty-seven eighty-four.
All right, town of Woodstock, um, update on Cubic Yard status? Um.
I'm, I'm choosing myself.
Yes. Um, the times, as they, they, uh, choosing not to come. Uh, have an informational meeting.
The application.
Now, could you?
Yes.
You will.
And then I wrote down here, I need copies.
Not to come. And, um, so, so we, there's nothing we do, but wait, until, and if we, we have. Our plan or not.
January what?
We have nothing.
Um, we have.
So there's nothing to discuss.
I'm coming back to you, Taylor.
Perfect, next.
So, next.
Yeah. Can I interrupt something?
Yeah.
So if he's, is he planning then to have the meeting January thirteenth?
Yes.
Because I'll have to get an ad out for that.
I would, it depends, I think it's a surveyor.
Yeah.